Please rise to the platform for agents and remain standing. We're going to have a debate with a former secretary, tax collector, and board clerk. Bill Harris, would you read it please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of United's agenda, please? A little bit move by Bill Harris, second. Two, second by Carol Papp, in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We will now have a meeting, a hearing on the code of conduct. Bill?
I'll pass it to Dr. Welkowitz.
Okay, Dr. Welkowitz.
Good evening. Our, our building level teams met throughout the last few months to review the code of conduct for each building. Our district-wide committee met last week and we suggest the proposed changes to the 2000, from the 2023 code of conduct for this year 2324 code of conduct. So the cover page, change of date to adoption of 7/6/23. Page number four, definition line two, check in the special education law. And will be discussed and changed the page numbers. Page number three, table of contents, amend page numbers to start with one, with one and introduction. Page number seven, which is number four, essential partners. In the note at the beginning, insert period at the end of the sentence. Page eight, correct alignment of B, C, D, moving B to the right. And C three, insert a comma, and remove the space between three and four. Page nine, remove space and after. And page 10, this is the dress code, change to read not to be revealing, see-through, or exposing areas. The bottom of student shirts should reach the top of their pants to cover their upper torso. Five, comma five is to insert correct page number. And five eight is insert bandanas in line one, except for, except when used to hold here in place. Page 11, insert new page number. And create, and renumber the list, creating or causing unwanted or unwelcome physical contact with other students, including but not limited to pushing, grabbing, poking, and any type of roughhousing. B five is changed to end to read teacher, school administrator, or other school personnel in charge of students. Page 12, E four, correct spelling of YouTube. E five, insert page number. And page 11, or page 13, E 20, insert a weapon before fire and after warning of. Page 20 is insert space, 26. Number 12, student searches and interviews, insert as paragraph number five. Per new district policy, searches may also be conducted on students and their belongings with either standing or handheld metal detectors. Such searches may be conducted on all students on a random basis on a predetermined schedule or whether the building administration has information on, which provides a reasonable suspicion that weapons or other contraband substances are or may be on school property. Page 27, columns A, B, C are out of alignment, so realign those and font size change on number C. Page 28, correct alignment of paragraphs. Page 31. Number 15, dissemination review, A three change to ensure the code is made available to all parents via the website and in hard copy. Note, the acknowledgement of receipt form attached to each code of conduct which is sent home to be signed by the parent guardian as well as any secondary student. Said form is kept on file in the district, but failure to sign will not be constituent proof that was never received. Those words suggest changes.
Okay, any questions by the board? Anyone in the public have any questions? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing, please? Both by any? Second? Second on that?
No, sir.
Favor?
Fire.
Opposed? Motion carried. Our first presentation tonight is the recognition of our retirees by our administrators and principals.
Okay, we're gonna start with the recognition of the elementary retirees. So we'll ask Mr. Brett Kinkredi and Mrs. Emily Best to come up, our two elementary principals.
Good evening. Okay.
Yep.
You hear me now?
Yeah.
Very good. The first person I'd like to recognize is Mrs. Judy Dawson. So Judy, if you want to come on up. Judy has 30 years, all at HBE, all in sixth grade, all in the same classroom. She has four sons, Frankie, Timmy, Patrick, and Cory, and she's a grandmother to five, Kayla, Leah, Stella, Lux, and Sloan. Last year for us at HBE, Mrs. Dawson began a yoga for kids morning program where she met with students grades four to six at 7:20 before the school day. She did an hour of yoga, and it's something she's interested in continuing with us, even in retirement, because health and fitness are her passions, and she loves sharing that with others. She has a wonderful YouTube channel called Amazing Trails Yoga, which everyone should subscribe to and follow on Instagram, because you can live vicariously through Mrs. Dawson as she follows, we follow her adventures. This summer, as she begins her retirement journey, she is going to bicycle from Kansas City to Missouri on the Katy Trail. And in March of next year, she is going to hike the entire Appalachian Trail from Georgia to Maine, which is estimated to take six months, and you can also follow on her Instagram. Judy, your positivity, zest for life and energy will be greatly missed at HBE. Retirement's not the end of the road, it's the beginning of the open highway, and we look forward to watching your highway roll out. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody. Next, I'd like to call up Nancy Farr. Nancy has 20 years with the district. She has split her time equally between HBE and ASK. She started as an aide in special education, and then was a kindergarten aide at HBE. I know this as a kindergarten form parent, because my daughter was in her kindergarten class, and Mrs. Farr plucked out her first tooth for me because I was too afraid to do it, so her kindergarten aide jumped in and took care of her tooth. Nancy is married with two children. Her son Travis and his wife Amanda have two children, Hunter, uh, two children, Hunter and McKenna. She has a daughter named Kelsey, and Kelsey has a puppy named Marley, who Nancy refers to as her grandpup, and I'm told that this dog can dance on two feet. In her retirement, Nancy's looking forward to living at the lake on her boat and spending time with her grandchildren and her grandpup. And she said she may come back to suffer us because she's gonna miss everybody. Nancy, you made a great impact and we are gonna miss you. And the last person I'll call is Kathy Convoy. Kathy has 31 years with the district and 25 of those in the classroom. All of her classroom years were spent in special education. All of her years were at ASK, except for the last year, and I feel fortunate to have been able to see her in her final year and get a year with Kathy. To know Kathy and to watch her at her craft, she truly loves the children who are in her classroom. Kathy loves the most challenging students, and she has a very special way of interacting with them and making them feel supported and loved. Kathy's the mom to two sons, Devon and John, and she has a daughter named Allison, and she's grandma to Brielle, who we look forward to having in pre-K at HBE next year. In her spare time, Kathy enjoys working outside, gardening, and spending time with her granddaughter, Brielle. Kathy plans on easing her way into retirement. She wants to stay active and connected at school. She plans on subbing and continuing her work with home instruction for the district. So Kathy, as you retire, may be proud of the work you've done, the person you are, and the difference you've made. Thank you.
Yeah, so I just have to say a few things. I mean, Kathy's been really, you know, I've been with Kathy for a long time, and it was just an unfortunate situation where, you know, they had to go down to, uh, to HBE this year. But I'm gonna tell a story, I hope you don't mind me telling the story. Kathy was a teacher's aide for a long time at ASK, and she had interviewed with us two times and did not get the job, and it was the third time that we interviewed her, and we saw such a difference. And I said to Matt Wentworth and Nicole I, who were the APs at the time, I said, "We're gonna give Kathy a shot this time." And I tell you, it was the best decision I ever made, and she was an amazing teacher right off the bat. It was an instant change that we saw from Kathy. And she, all the things that Emily said, hundred percent. The kids, she had the toughest classes, it was a K1 special class. You know, the students were just, you know, very challenging but loving, and she provided that love and support. And it was so great to go down to her room and just see the smiles on their faces, and when you were having a bad day, you would go down to her room, she may have had a, having a bad day, but you could just see the smiles and everything. And Kathy, we missed you this year, we're gonna miss you terribly. I know we got here for the summer, we're gonna get you subbing maybe a few, few more times, right? You can't, you can't leave. But I know, we're gonna miss you at ASK. We love you very much, and we just hope you have a wonderful retirement, so, well. All right. Nicely done, Amy. So, we have three folks retiring. Amy Smith, who is not in attendance tonight, but I just want to recognize Amy. Amy's a kindergarten teacher. She's been teaching for 30 years and three months. She was very quick to let me know that she had an additional three months, because if you ever go onto the retirement consultation, they do it right by the day, so every day really counts when you're, when you're gonna retire. All at Port Jervis, she started at Sullivan Avenue. She was a substitute kindergarten teacher, second grade, third grade, and fourth grade, and she finished up as a kindergarten teacher. She said she absolutely loved teaching kindergarten, and she will miss working with her amazing colleagues in kindergarten and her amazing teacher's aide, Sarah Nelly. But, you know, Amy, I just want to wish you a happy retirement as well, so just a round of applause for Amy Smith. We have Donna Mead in the house, Donna, come on up. Just love Donna. Donna's been teach, well, she's been teaching and with us for 26 years total in the district, all, all in Port Jervis. Also, she was at Sullivan Avenue. She did a little bit of time over at HBE, and then finished up at the, at ASK for 19 years she's been with us at ASK. She's worked in many different situations, I think when I started, you were in the ISS room? And we got you out of there, Donna.
Thank you.
Right, we got you out of there.
Thank you.
Whoo, that was tough. And we, and she's been with Jess Diamond in kindergarten as an aide, and again, just the students just adore you, we adore you, and we're gonna miss you terribly. She's here tonight with her colleague and close friend, Sandy Felter, who's also a kindergarten aide. Sandy, we're almost there, you and I, right? We're maybe going out together at some point. But Donna, listen, we're definitely gonna miss you, your smile, your friendliness, your, you know, your joy, your day.
Have fun.
Yes, well, I hope you did, I know we have a lot of fun.
Yes, we did.
But we're gonna definitely miss you, we wish you the best in retirement, okay? Next, I'd like to call up Nancy Northup. So Nancy has been teaching 37 years, all at Port Jervis. That's a round of applause right there. She also started at Sullivan Avenue, and we all know what happened there, and again, glad to have her when she came over to ASK. Nancy has taught second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and she is currently in sixth grade. She's been, when I started, she was a co-teach teacher with who else than Mills in the sixth grade, they were a phenomenal team. And the last few years, we moved Nancy to sixth grade math, I guess. And what an impact she's had with the students in sixth grade in math. To see her work with those students, the progress that they've made, we check in with them every, you know, every so often throughout the year, and to hear her talk about the progress that the students are making, obviously we know it's because of Nancy's expertise and all the, you know, the care and love that she gives them. She said the most she'll miss, working with the amazing students at ASK, and obviously her sixth grade colleagues and teachers that she has at ASK. So Nancy, we're gonna miss you terribly. We thank you for the 37 years of hard work that you've given the district, and we wish you the best in retirement. Anybody else from ASK looking to retire tonight? Do you have anybody else?
There's no one in the middle school tonight, right?
No middle school?
They're not here, bud.
You wanna say?
Call up Mrs. Cook, in the middle school.
Oh, sorry. Hi, good evening. So we have Mrs. Donna Schutz that's retiring, she's unable to make it tonight, but I did want to get up and just say a couple of words about Mrs. Schutz. So first off, Mrs. Schutz has worked in the district for 22 years. I think she has worked in every single building, including arch, aces, she does home tutoring, so in, in pretty much every single capacity there is. For the middle schools, she's been currently a seventh grade special ed math teacher, but she was eighth grade special ed, pretty much any situation you threw Donna in, she was gonna go do it. If you ask the staff and the students at the middle school about Mrs. Schutz, the one word that's gonna come to mind is that she's selfless. It, it's actually funny today, I asked a couple of teachers, and they were like, you know what, you never, ever saw her in the faculty room, you didn't see her really out with the teachers, because she was with the students at all points in time. She gave up her lunch, she worked through her prep times, we had students that if they struggled reading, Donna was in there with them, working like, just effortlessly with them. Every single sporting event, she was gonna be there, the kids' biggest cheerleaders, and she truly, truly loved the students. And I know that she loved working here, she actually, she stopped in, I'm gonna say about a month ago, the kids were in the building, some of her students saw her, and so, you know, there's hugs all around, and then when they, when she was going to leave, multiple students just, just crying, just, and it, you know, it's just a true testament to who she is. She really exemplifies what being a teacher is, and it's, it's not always just about the curriculum, but it's the impact they have on the kids' lives. And, and Mrs. Schutz definitely impacted everybody that she was around. And so I think the piece that I'm gonna leave you with is, what I would say is Mrs. Schutz's mantra, which I was on her board, she said it all the time, but she always said, "It's a good day to have a good day." So we wish her the best in retirement, she's gonna be missed from the family at the middle school. Mr. Lozaro's gonna come up from the high school.
Thank you. So the high school has two retirees. One of our retirees is not here tonight, it's Tony Parata, I just wanted to recognize Tony. Tony was a, has been a longtime monitor for our district, he always connected with our students. Often I would see Tony sitting down with them at lunch, engaged in conversation, always keeping that watchful eye out. For those of you who, last year's graduation, you might remember Liam Schrader's speech, where he dubbed Tony our very own night and shining offer. So, so Tony will be missed, we wish you all the best in your retirement, and thank you for your service. So, at this point, I would ask, to embarrass this Tracy West Barnes. All right, so Ms. West Barnes is a multifaceted individual who cares deeply about our students, our staff, and our school. A member of our district since 1998, she started as a substitute teacher, she has been a tech teacher, a vex robotics coach, a mock truck coach, a class advisor, curriculum coordinator, union social chair, did I forget anything yet? No? And, and prom chaperone extraordinaire, right? So we appreciate all the time you've been there. Tracy can teach anything from coding to robotics to renewable energy, 3D printing, woodwork, CNC machining. I'm, I'm probably forgetting something, right? And, and she's, has been a planner her entire career. When I first, I met her a while ago through Mr. Johnson, but I had got to really know her over the last two years. Our first sit-down together, she had told me she has two, two years ago, right, "I have two years left," was what she had said, and she wanted to ensure that she leaves the department in a good space. I didn't really believe she had two years left, I'm still not convinced you have that time left, I think it's gonna be Wald Wilson. So, but just this year, she connected with the local carpenters' union, and I heard students leave in the classroom that day with a plan, a future plan that they did not know of even existed, right? So they left here in $20 an hour, they left with an idea of something, students who might struggle in other areas found something that day in your, in your room, so that was amazing, neat to see, and I know you, you left that connection for us to them. So Tracy is a lifelong learner who brought all of the passion and integrity into the classroom. For 24 years, she has made a difference in the lives of our students, and due to her thoughtful planning, giving it all always, she will make a difference in years to come still. So thank you, Tracy. Tracy's a planner, as I said, she plans to travel next spring. I think I got three, Norway and Iceland, right? Beautiful. With her husband Joe Johnson, right? And Tracy will be spending her time with her family, five children, grandchildren, and is, I'm, have a feeling creating new ways to get off the grid? You said something, something about that, right? No, so I know they run a self-sufficient type, right? So thank you, Tracy, for everything, we wish you all the best in your retirement, it's been a pleasure working with you, and take care of Joe Johnson.
Okay, the last retiree tonight, we always have the oldest person go last, so. So next is our director of facilities, Don Crease. Judas, come on up, buddy. Fifteen years ago, Don retired from IBM, and we were looking for a director of facilities, John McXanthus and Bill Anafree, Lori Case and I were on the committee, and Don came, and we're like, we think this is the guy. He knows a lot about a lot of stuff, and our facilities are terrible. You know, when I came back as assistant supervisor in 2006, everything here looked the same way it did when I, when I graduated in 1985, it was just older, nothing had changed. But when you look around our schools now, from roofs to windows, to interior doors, to safety bill, to the security vestibules, all the new air conditioners on the rooftops, all that happened while Don was here. Literally, we had nothing new going on when Don took over 15 years ago, so. He had tremendous experience from IBM that he brought to us that was outside of the K-12 world, which was tremendous for us. And he did a tremendous and tremendous job for us. He actually is retiring on Thursday, and then he'll come back next week to start as the interim director until we get a new director. And then once we have a new director, he'll then switch over to a consultant role to help us get the middle school done, because we were afraid if a new director comes in and has to do anything with the middle school, they might turn and run. So we really went on to worry about that until the new director, going to go see that place yet, until we get it in better shape. So, but Don has done a tremendous job. My wonder, brother, is that we only had a year together coming back. I wish, now I wish I came back a little sooner, we could have maybe had some different plans for some of the stuff that we're in the middle of now and trying to fix. Yeah, yeah, but Don, you've been a tremendous asset to us. Asset, yeah. And, you know, you look around and everything, those of you who have been around here a long time, like me, you know that it didn't always look like this, you know? Things looked very differently back in the old days. And let me just look around here, how differently this looks compared to the old days, and that's all a tribute to your vision of where we're going, so congratulations, buddy.
Thank you very much.
I'm very step away. You know, like John said, I was on the board when we hired you, I've worked with you for eight or nine projects, and it's been a real honor to work with you. And I know we're still gonna be working together, but, you know, the work that you've performed for this district has just been amazing. And, you know, I don't know how many people know this, and it's odd that I would keep track of this, but with all the projects that Don was involved in, Don, Don had a real eye for reviewing the prints. I always used to think he knew the prints, the guys that drill. And over the years, my last tally was Don had saved us $3.8 million in savings. So honestly, when it comes to the large fund balance, he's partially responsible. You know, it's, I look, I certainly look forward to continue working with you and your role as, as our advisor on these projects, and just thank you again for everything you did.
Thank you.
Our next presentation, our student representative, Jocelyn Decker.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jocelyn Decker, and I am the junior here at Port Jervis High School. Before I begin, I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to serve tonight. Last week, we had eight students inducted into the National Technical Honor Society for their Boise Sea Tech program. I would like to congratulate E. Ly Bumgarner, Samuel Seward, Logan Paget, Haley Dubdell, Cora Mason, James Carman, Ethan McCoy, and Francesca Leos. We also had a character education celebration for all who are honored for doing great things throughout the school year, and we had our annual academic awards. Mr. Lozaro, Dr. Bell, Zachary Einhoff, and Rachel Durier attended the Vala Victorian, Talav Victorian luncheon in Washingtonville today. Tonight is our senior athletic banquet at the Erie Trackside, and we begin regents exams tomorrow morning. The schedule is posted on our website and on the morning announcements. This Thursday is our annual senior scholarship night at the high school, where over $2,500,000 will be given out in scholarships. The Port Jervis High School Drama Club One Act Festival will be this Friday, June 16. Our garden campus Sea Tech graduation will also be this Friday, June 16. Gibson Road Sea Tech graduation will be held next Tuesday, June 20th, and next Wednesday, June 21st. On Thursday, June 22nd. On Thursday, June 22nd, SAD will sponsor the pre-graduation senior prize giveaway and party. Donations of gift cards and other items are still being accepted. On Friday, June 23rd, will be graduation on Chase Field, followed by the graduation in Water Canyon. As today was the last day of classes for our high school, high school report cards will be mailed home for the first week of July. Thank you.
Our next presentation is MTSS by Dr. Walkowitz and Anthony Lozaro.
Yeah, so we're gonna be with the whole secondary. And again, thank you, Jocelyn. And just, yeah, and tomorrow, Thursday, rather, we're giving away $250,000. I want to thank the community, it's an amazing event. And it's really, I'm sorry. Thank you. So, so again, on Thursday evening, we're gonna give, this, the community will be giving to our graduating class $250,200 in scholarships. Just an amazing evening, so we're looking forward to that. But tonight, we're gonna be doing MTSS. If you just give me a moment, I'm going to just throw it up on the screen. Yep, I just. Oh, I apologize, elementary's supposed to be on the table. I was really excited, I'm sorry. I feel like I've done that before. I think Mr. Lozaro had a couple of espressos tonight. Whatever, buddy.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Walkowitz and I'm really proud to present our MTSS work from the last two years. So when I came on board, I sat with the principals over the summer. And we talked about some of the interventions going on in the programming. And we talked about MTSS as a general framework to tie all the different initiatives that the district has been taking on over the last years into one nice package. So some of the principals felt like there were a lot of things going on, a lot of balls being juggled, but they didn't have a connection to each other. And it kind of made the work a little difficult to manage and understand. So we brought that under the umbrella of MTSS. We picked teams in each building and had conversations each month. That was dedicated time to having and designing a framework that would support students. And that framework, what MTSS is, it's a framework for academics as well as social, emotional and behavioral learning. So without further ado, I'm gonna let the real stars of the show come on board. We're gonna start with elementary and secondary. And they're gonna walk you through our two-year journey of what was, what is now and what is to come.
Thank you very much, Dr. Walkowitz. So, just gonna move along here. So before we begin, again, I just wanna thank Dr. Walkowitz, again, for putting this committee together. We also worked with this guy Emory from PLC Associates, Emory Roffel, who really guided and led a lot of the discussions that we had. He's not here tonight, but again, Emory was, was key. And you know, again, kind of keeping us focused and guiding this, this work that we've done. As you can see, this is the MTSS committee members. You know, again, what was really great about this committee was the fact that we were able to get together, not only between the two elementary schools. And I know that that's been a very, you know, a big goal of all of ours to get both elementary schools together. But there were many times that we did work with high school and middle school staff as well, all together at once. And it was great to really kind of like see how everybody was going back and forth with different ideas, you know, begging and borrowing, you know, different ideas from each other. And then putting things on paper to kind of like make it come, come through. So it's, it's been a really great journey. I certainly want to thank my two assistant principals, Mrs. Roosevelt, Mrs. Gennaro, for their leadership. Mr. Karen was, was critical from the HBE side. I want to thank him as well. And again, the team, as you can see, there's a lot of folks on the team here tonight. Just, just the great work that we've done. We had, we had a good foundation, but this really kind of, you know, these folks are experts in this field. And it was just, you know, kind of great to work with everybody. So again, I'm gonna be done here. We're gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to my two experts. We have Julie Campbell and Madison Neosi. They are MTSS coordinators for ASK. And they're gonna take it from here, alright? Ladies, it's all yours.
Hello, everyone. Okay, so my name is Julie Campbell. I am the K through two, our MTSS coordinator.
I'm Madison Neosi and I'm the three to six MTSS coordinator.
And I'm gonna just talk a little bit about MTSS and exactly what it means. Multi-tiered System of Support. So there are three tiers, tier one, two and three. And tier one is pretty much the classroom level with the teachers. And then tier two brings in the AIS teacher. So if a child is struggling a little bit more and needs some more help, we use data and, and other things to be able to give that child support. Finally, there's tier three, which is, and this is gonna be discussed in further slides. Tier three is if that child is really struggling with the first two layers of support, they get an additional third layer of support. And it is usually very intense. And we have meetings to discuss what would be best for that student and what kinds of interventions will help them. And we also talked about the, the three. There's three different parts of MTSS. And again, that's gonna be discussed further. But there's the academic, which was from two years ago, when we, that's what it mostly consisted of. And finally, now, when we integrated and talked to all the schools, we were able to do behavioral as well as social, emotional and incorporate those. So it's really pretty amazing. And so talking about our two-year journey, it has been great to have HBE and ASK work together as well as middle school and the high school. It was neat to see the older and the high school and what they do for MTSS and how they've come through this process. We've tightened up the information and the data collection and all the forms. So they're all pretty much throughout ASK, HBE. And it was great sharing ideas with everybody.
So I apologize for my voice. I might have yelled a little too much on Field Day on Monday. But yeah, we worked with HBE and ASK. We had our own systems in place. HBE had their own systems in place and we did what worked for each building. And over the past two years, to be able to meet and have shared time together and decide on which forms we wanted to officially use, which systems like we could use together, which worked for both buildings. We've really come a long way. We began to add the behavioral piece to MTSS. It used to be known as RTI and it is now MTSS. So we incorporated that social, emotional learning piece into it. We've used PBIS, which is a website that incorporates like tier one prevention ideas for making sure that we reach each student behaviorally and socially, emotionally, and target or reach any kids that are struggling within that area, not just academic. And within that result, we've come up with our new Core Pride Five as a result. And now we have more shared language within the social, emotional learning. We've also worked extremely hard over the past two years to determine entrance and exit criteria of each tier, which was a really big piece we were missing. We knew kids were struggling and needed that extra support for interventions, but we weren't sure where the cutoffs were. So within IXL and all the systems we use, there are cutoff scores for tier one, tier two and tier three. So kids are more fluid in between each system. And we now have a shared Google Classroom between ASK and HBE. So all the forms are on our Google Classroom. It can be reached by the students. Or it can reach by the teachers, sorry. To make sure that we all are using the same forms, the same flow chart, the same process. We've worked hard to make sure that everything is right at our reach and all in one localized place.
Ms. Cook has like a thousand tabs on the top of her phone. So we can't seem to find where, where it went.
And I don't want to keep you picking on a lot of them.
But while we're doing that, another component, when she was talking about the, we have a screener that is for every trimester. So if we notice, we have our students for AIS, for example, because I'm a reading teacher, we have our students for AIS. But then the next trimester, we look at those screeners again, sorry. We look at those screeners again, so that no student falls through the cracks. We really try to, to crack down on them.
And we're gonna pass it on.
I'm Lynn Felix, from HBE. I am the four to six MTSS coordinator.
And I'm Melissa Haye, I am the K to three coordinator.
So one of the things that we really put a lot of time and energy into was what we called the MTSS referral flow chart. And that basically is for the teachers so that anybody new coming in, anybody that needed a refresher, they can see what exactly the process was for MTSS and what to do. Very quickly, because it is very intense, if you take a, take a good look at it. It starts out within the classroom, where the teachers meet at grade level, come up with interventions for the students that need the extra help. If those interventions work, they continue. If they don't work, they'll try a different intervention. After that, if it does not work, we then move into the building level MTSS meetings. This is, this document has quite a bit in it. We have a lot of hyperlinks that the, that the teachers can use. There are cutoff points there. On there as well, we have our universal screeners, any of the letters that we can send out. It really is very intensive, all of it. And now, but I think we're really proud of it. It really is a great, you know, a great piece of work for better, I wanted a better word. And it's, all of it there is very much so just, you know, a way for the teachers to kind of help themselves with it and know what the process is. So we wanted to look at also and really reflect on what we learned from the MTSS process for the last couple of years. The biggest thing I think that we learned is that MTSS is a live document. Always evolving, always. And we have to change with the needs of our students, as in anything else. What we really found is that we needed to streamline our data tracking system. We, we started a new program that has continuous diagnostic monitoring with IXL, which I'm sure you probably have heard of. Which is really wonderful because it gives us live data at all times, rather than just the three times a year that we were doing before. And we also found that we needed a data dashboard, a place to warehouse all of our information together, which is forthcoming still. But it is something that we're working towards. We also recognized that we needed to improve and refine our tier one interventions. So that is something that we've been working on as well. Those are the ones, as Julie talked about, that really start out, that are, those are universal for all students that are available to them that need any help. And we wanted to really develop common assessments as additional points that we need. Lastly, we wanted to look at enrichment opportunities. And that's something that we're still working on as well.
Not only did we have the time to work together and to reflect on what we, we've done, but we actually had time to plan the next steps, which is huge for us in, in education. So we are planning on continuing our work with our social, emotional, behavioral parts of the MTSS process. We're gonna improve and design delivery of instruction and enrichment opportunities. And we're gonna improve our tier one instruction, which is in the classroom instruction for all students. And how are we gonna do that? With some amazing professional development. We are gonna work on our report cards, to align them with more of the standards. We're gonna design some common assessments. Continue to build our capacity within our new Wilson Phonics program, which has so far been amazing in those schools. We're gonna train more providers in the intervention part. And one of our personal favorites is we're gonna get back into each other's buildings and get to visit each other's teams, working hard and learning new things from each other.
So where this all connects, and just again, so like what makes this really, really important is, as you know, the last couple of years, we went through a little bit of a blip with pandemic. And when students started to come back and we had, had normal school again, obviously the, you know, theme seemed to be like every student was lacking in some skills. And so in an effort to obviously not classify every student with a special, you know, label, MTSS is really that, that vehicle that we are going to address student learning gaps or skill gaps before it even goes to the PPS department and before students even get considered to get classified for special ed. So what this team did is put together things in both buildings, so it's aligned in both buildings, so that we can address those gaps. The folks that are the experts as far as the AIS teachers, the teachers in the classroom, as it, as it relates to tier one and tier two supports, they can do their work a little bit more focused so that we can address those gaps. And again, if we see progress being made, then we know we're just, we're just, you know, skill gap learning and we need to just kind of continue with that as opposed to sending them on to PPS. Because we know our PPS percentage right now is pretty high. We want to obviously work on that. So that's kind of where all of this kind of connects. And I just wanted to go share that with you guys so you understand like this is, this is why this work is important. So that we can kind of help students along and maybe they don't go to, they don't go to special ed. Alright, any questions about anything that you heard tonight from, from the elementary side? No? Well, thank you very much for letting us present. Turn it over to Dr. Walkowitz. Yeah, okay.
Alright, our secondary team is gonna come up. You will notice that there are some consistencies between elementary and secondary. That was a huge, that was a huge lift for our secondary team because they didn't have the types of structures in place for RTI like our elementary school did. So that was a, that was a new learning experience for them this last two years. As well as incorporating PBIS. That was something that they hadn't had. So they were kind of starting from ground zero. They did learn a lot from our elementary buildings, which I think shows that alignment. So I'm gonna hand it off to our secondary.
Alright, there we go. So everybody, they kind of already introduced, I know you guys have already heard us talk about MTSS. So we kind of wanted to, again, we're gonna talk, talk a little bit about what MTSS is and then take you through our actual process. So just like they talked about at the elementary school, MTSS really is a tiered program that's put in to support students academically, behaviorally and emotionally. I have to be honest with you. So I was like 15 years high school teacher and then when I started here, and everybody's talking MTSS and I'm like, I don't really even know RTI. So I'm not sure what MTSS was. And I kept going to meetings and I'd sit there. I think I would like grasp it and then I kind of said, be like, what exactly is it again? So it took me a little bit, but honestly, if you just think about it, like you're almost making individualized plans for students where you see that they need making individualized plans for students where you see that they need support, or even you take your top kids and where can we help them excel? Tier one is what are we providing and what are we offering to all of our students? And then tier two and tier three is more specific students, and what can we do, like we said, to support them, fill in any gaps academically, behaviorally, emotionally, and even taking our top kids, and how do we push them further? So our focus this year, I don't know how many we have, there we go, I think, was number one, to start to build a culture focused around MTSS. So to build that language, we hear it more often now, it's amazing to me to see teachers on a regular basis that are saying, oh, okay, that's a kid that we need to think about at MTSS. We've had teachers that, that reach out and they'll send an email and say, hey, you know what? We're seeing that this, this child has something going on. Can, can we talk about them in MTSS? Can you guys bring them up at your next meeting? Here's some things that we have that are, that are taking place. So we started to build a culture where it is spoken about and everybody is on the same board, using the same language. Along with that, we wanted to create a cohesive process and procedure. So again, when we notice that there's something that a student needs, where do we start? What's step one? Now we have step one, what's step two? And we took a lot of time this year, I think, really honing in on that and figuring out a good process, building, we have an effective interface there. Ms. Lozaro loves that word. So we have everything in Google Classroom with that, and then also making sure that our paperwork is very consistent. I think we went through, I don't know how many trials of paperwork of different ways to, to track data, different ways, how do we get information out to staff? But finally, we're kind of getting down to where we have a common system and really making sure that it is data-driven. So our kids' goals are based on actual things that we can test and see that they need. So that, that was our focus this year. Oh, you must be the next slide. I'm handing it over to Ms. Lozaro. Does, I just get nervous.
Yeah, I trust it. So yeah, what was, what was great to do this work, first of all, we had the opportunity to not only work with the middle school, but we also did sit in the same spaces and share time with the elementary school. So is this evolution of common language, right? And anytime you're developing a culture, the foundation of culture is language, right? So we're able to share that and what's happening at the middle school, while it looks different at the secondary level, does contain and support and continue the work that's done at that level. So the last bullet referenced that goal, that data-driven goal setting, right? So that, that is done on two levels, right? The tier one level and the tier two and on three level. At the tier one level, we're talking about what we do for the building, right? So last summer, our work began last summer, and you're, oh, there we go. And we set up first, we started with our academic goal, right? So our academic goal, based on our data, we were looking at consistent use of learning targets. I can tell you in both the middle school and high school, there's consistent use of learning targets. As the middle school principal, I'm also tasked with going in, doing the final observation of the, did I say middle school? As the high school. I said, that's how close we were together. So as the high school principal, I am tasked with going into the middle school, and I can tell you that, you know, we collect data on learning targets in the classroom, and we're seeing this happen consistently in our building. I will tell you that is the biggest bang for your buck. So when we talk about educational research, we know learning targets are the biggest bank or bug that supports all students. I apologize. Sure. So a learning target for our language is ICAN statements, right? In student-friendly language, for example, ICAN, and then whatever task it is analyzed, right? We'll talk a little about that, a little bit about that academical vocabulary when Ms. Brink, uh, Ms. Elisa, I apologize, comes up. But yeah, so it's the ICAN statement that drives a lesson, it's a measurable goal for the student. And at the end of the lesson, the idea is, okay, did you reach that target? And, and that is the driver of the lesson. The protocols that fall in between are relative to that discovery of that learning target. So it sets the target. And again, the simple thing is, if you're going out doing, I was looking at you, Sarah, I was thinking about hunting. And if you don't have your target, you're going to miss every time, right? So it gives the classroom a space to aim for. So the next piece of this is expand our course offerings. I did talk about that with Dr. Walkwitz earlier this year about some of the expansion of both of the college courses. What I did mention is we also expanded our elective offerings. And at the secondary level, I know middle school has also expanded their honors course offerings and elective offerings as well. So there is an expansion of offerings because we know engaged students are successful students. After-school support, that's something that we continue and advance as money and what's available to us. We've been able to work hard on that gap, closing that deficit. We have students who, we have on average thirty-plus students sitting for algebra after school preparing for the briefs. So our kids are there, our teachers are dedicated. Behaviorally, so behaviorally, that's the PBIS side of the spectrum, that's positive behavior incentive.
Interventions.
Intervention. And there's a lot of advocates. So one thing that we came into the building, and this was again, a secondary goal, discipline referrals, right? The discipline side of it versus let's look at positive referrals. Let's reframe what our referrals look like, let's reframe how we're seeing those students. And I'll share some of the data on the next slide. Social, emotional learning. So again, that's the final piece here. And both our buildings, right, we have the same, every month, we have the same character education piece going on, same color of the month relative to that. Like for example, if it's integrity or perseverance, right, we have a color for that. And on Wednesdays, the whole building would wear that. We have, they give out candy at the middle school, we give out candy at the high school, kids love candy, and we use that as a way to build our community. We actually just, I'll talk a little bit more about that, how we celebrate that later. All right, by the numbers, just to give you a sense of what our baseline was. So baseline, I had mentioned learning targets at the beginning of this year, so we look at cycles, right? Our first cycle of going through classrooms and talking with teachers and building up that capacity, we found sixty-five percent were using learning targets on a regular basis, right? Now, cut classes, so this is our data from last year. So when I finished the year last year, we got the count of cut classes, it was one thousand fifty-five cut classes. So you do the math, that's about five point eight a day. Second, our second most referral last year, I think I just heard a phone go off, cellphone violation. Same empty class. So two hundred thirty-one cellphone violations. And our total discipline referrals were two thousand three hundred and nine. So I will tell you, obviously, this is, this impacts learning, right? We know that cut classes, cell phones, right? Impact learning. So end of year, this year, right, this is where we stand now, ninety percent learning targets, right? And I can tell you, so the other side of that ninety percent is, I know the goal's a hundred, right? I want to tell you the goal's a hundred. Every time I walk in a classroom and it wasn't there, I received the email, by the time I got back to my office, oh, you missed it. It was in this part of my Google Classroom. So teach, it's the language we're speaking now, so they're sensitive to that. I walk in and see excellent stuff happening, dialogue between teachers about their learning targets. Cut classes down to three hundred eighty-nine, right? So the math there, sixty-three percent reduction in, in that. And I can, and again, tier one, what, so we ditched up tier one, hall passes, e-hall pass, where actually now every student carries a wooden, starting next year, a wooden hall pass, right? So they, so this was our labrador wood. Now we have beautiful wooden ones that make it, it's great. Second most referral, two hundred eighty, two hundred ninety-nine positive referrals. Now, to be honest, if I didn't get the data from today, I had, I did this over the weekend, I think I saw seven or eight positive referrals come in just today for, for our students. So two hundred ninety-nine is our positive, that's our second most referral written this year for our teachers, right? So it changes their frame of what they're looking at. And our total discipline referrals are down eleven hundred forty-eight, which is fifty percent reduction. So character education piece, so that was the, again, that's the tier one piece. So tier one, what are we doing for all students? Good tier one instruction limits what we have to do at the tier two level, right? Because if we are doing what we need to do at that pace, we can be more effective as we enter, enter the intervention space. So monthly character traits, so Kathy Lane and Jen Griswold, I just want to give them a shout out, they really run this program, they do an excellent job. They do what they call the prize patrol, I had mentioned earlier. Kid shows up wearing, if pink's the color of the month, right, we take a collective picture, any kid wearing pink running through the hallways gets a dollar and a rancher. You know, I, I wear shirts often, but it's high that matches, so the whole faculty and staff are involved in this. And again, looking at numbers, last year, we had a hundred and twenty-seven. So at the end of each month, the teachers and students nominate students for this, who exhibit this trait, respect, whatever it is. We had a hundred twenty-seven nominations last year, this year, a hundred sixty-three nominations. So again, we see that growth of our program. Character cash incentives, character cash is money that's given, it's port-jerbs money that's given out that you can use in the cafeteria to enter an athletic event, to purchase pizza at the end of the day in our school store, right? So students are receiving that, and that's just recognize, hey, I saw you doing something really good the other day, here's a dollar of character cash. And again, we're trying to grow that program, right, through education, participation, and infusion. And if you want, if you want to counterfeit it, you can't, because we actually stamped them with the graduation seal, so they have raised embossment to it. But that is the character cash. So next up, I'm going to pass it on to Ms. Cook.
I still want the quicker. Now, so just to go off even with the character ed, so we have Mr. Wilson that runs the character ed program in the middle school, and they really have aligned collectively secondary, it really has been great. Our kids really make out because they get candy over here on the middle school side, and they walk to gym, and they all see them in their clothes on the way to gym, the high school gives them candy again. So they definitely have worked out there for them. But just to keep going off of some of the tier one things that we did, we wanted to think about, how do we, how do we look at our kids and see like social, emotionally, what kind of needs or supports they, they might have? You might not know what's going on in a kid's life. So we actually sent out SEL surveys this year, I think Ms. Hargit and the guidance team, Mr. Miller, who's our MTSS coordinator, wasn't able to make it tonight, and Mr. Wilson as well, for putting these together. But we asked kids questions like, did you sleep at night? Did you eat breakfast this morning? Do you have an adult at home that you trust? Do you have an adult at school that you trust? Do you feel like you fit in? And we were actually, we color-coded it so that like anybody that was coming up with a no or kind of like, I don't sleep, I don't eat, it came up in red. And we identified every single student in our building that we felt like was kind of in that, that no range. And then we tasked our, our guidance team and teachers with, you know, here's, here's a list of students, let's go make a relationship with them. So they met with every single kid throughout the year to talk with them, to try to build those relationships as they went. So that was really great to see. And we did that twice. We started a mentor program at the end of the year this year, it's going to be growing next year, where we are going to have teachers and staff, not just teachers, but our entire staff that are signed up to be mentors to build relationships with our students. They're going to meet once a week with the kids. And again, even if they're going to go to their baseball game or whatever, here on function, if they need help with organization, they're going to help them with that. We're even working with, it's great being here and working secondary, because we talked about, let's pull some high school kids down to work with our kids. Nothing is greater, like watching the high schoolers walk through for their grad walk, and the middle schoolers go nuts just getting a high five or a fist bump from a senior. Like they, they're like famous in that moment. So we know that we can capitalize on being here and having those high schoolers come down and being a great presence for our kids. We have a lot of guiding groups that take place all the time, the kids are getting pulled out in groups to speak with. We really want to start an organization group, we've realized that middle school step one is to organize their stuff. So we'd like to start that next year, just learning how to keep things in order. Our PBIS program, like Mr. Lozaro was talking about, we've not only just done this with our students, but also our staff. So we recognize that, you know what, MTSS is for our staff as well. So we, you know, we, the middle school has a great scavenger hunt going on with the staff, if anybody's seen it, heard it, or seen any middle school teachers running around. That's why, because we're kind of in a, in a serious competition with that going on. But it's been another great thing. We have our character ed assemblies, students and staff are nominated. So as Ms. Lozaro said, this month, the character trait is perseverance. So we have students and staff that are both recognized for that. And then we've been ensuring student engagement. So I know like the high school, you guys have the volunteer fair, we did the club fair, we did a secondary multicultural night. We had teachers that were recognizing, you know what, we have students that don't necessarily, they're not involved in sports. We had a gaming club that just got huge. So we had an awesome, thanks to the tech department, like esports night here. It was a hit, you can check it out on YouTube, it was really cool. But the kids had a huge gaming tournament, we had kids that were commentators, and they really did a good job, it was really professional. It was, it was awesome. So we're trying to do a lot to just offer to all of our kids and ways to just rep them where, where they need to be. And then just briefly to talk about tier two and three, sorry, I never breathe, I'm going to go quick, I promise. So tier one again is for like, what do we offer to all of our kids? But then tier two and three has been, okay, we've identified, like I said, those kids on that SEL survey that we have concerns. We identify that kids academically or behaviorally, why do we have a kid that every single day, you know, refuses to take their hood off? It's not just that they're not, there's something going on, it's not just about the defiance of keeping the hood up, right? Like what's going on there? So when we start to focus on these, what we do is we start to say, okay, how can we help these kids? So the process for us really is that ours, we're blessed in the middle school to kind of have a schedule where we can have our teams meet. So our teachers meet as teens, they start to identify students that they, we all have concerns in different places. They do, they gather data on their own, whether it is from school to school, their discipline records, their attendance, we have their iXL scores, we have tested our teachers, we're doing four common assessments a year, so all of those scores. And then the teams come together and they bring that to our building-wide MTSS team. So one person from the team will come, we meet every four to five weeks, the team sits down and analyzes data, and then we brainstorm and we set a goal for a student based on whatever need they have. So every student gets their own individualized goal. And then the students are, we meet with the students and then tell them what their goal is. Sometimes they can get an incentive, talkies seem to be the hip. And then these students work toward their goal on a weekly basis. So what we wanted to do now is kind of actually give you a little mock show of that. So I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, for me, if I just hear all this, it doesn't make sense until I see it in action. So I wanted to show you what it looks like in action, right? Because MTSS is crazy. This is my first year doing it, it's overwhelming, but it's really beneficial and it's really awesome. So we have a really, we have a crazy child in school, her name is Eileen Cook, she's in seventh grade, and we identified that she has a behavior issue, right? We don't know what yet, but we're collecting our data in our team, and we've sent it to the MTSS team. So this doesn't look like this, typically it's on a spreadsheet, it's very organized, but for you guys, it's going to look like this in a portfolio. Okay, we've identified the plan type, it's behavior. Now, we're going to identify our areas of concern for her, right? We're going to mark what that is. So for Eileen, it's behavior towards academic work, she doesn't want to do her work for some reason. Right? Pretty typical, just kidding. And then we just think about questions, like what specific behavior is the most problematic? Is this behavior interfering with student peer safety or learning? What triggers tend to result in the behavior? When, when does the behavior usually occur? Are there precursor behaviors that typically lead up to the most challenging behavior? So just things that we keep in mind and that we consider when we're creating this individualized plan. Then in the middle school, this is what our data tracker sheet looks like. So after we've identified the plan, we've set the goal, we've met with the student, we've communicated with the staff, we send this out. So it looks a little crazy, but for some of the core classes, like ELA, science, social studies, every day of the week, they have to fill this out based on the student's identified area of concern, right? So they rank it either three, two, one, zero. If it's less than a three, they have to select what the problem was. Why did the student receive less than a three that day? Was it because they avoided their work? Was it because they were daydreaming? And what's really nice is that we give our students and our staff a lot of choice in this, so they can actually go in and edit the options to fit what they see in their classroom. They can also leave comments, so that's really nice. So as we analyze the data, we see specifically what's occurring in specific settings with specific people, so that helps us figure out, is this goal attainable or do we have to change it? At the end of the week, our MTSS coordinator goes in, calculates all of the data, and then meets with the student the following Monday, and they have a really awesome conversation where our MTSS coordinator takes notes, shares it with the team, and then for the students, it's a moment to reflect, right? And they're like, oh, yeah, in English, this is what's going on, and I don't know what to do. And then they have a really nice dialogue where they offer suggestions as to how to work on that. After that, if they've reached their goal, they get an incentive, right? And it could either be the same one or they can change it, and that's really nice, too. Personally, I saw someone come up in the hallway, a student to a teacher they have for study hall, and they're like, can I see my MTSS sheet? A student said that, like verbatim. And that was really cool to hear them say MTSS, and they want to look at their data. So the teacher pulls it up, and the teacher's like, oh, why did you get this score in science? And they had a conversation about that, and that, it was so natural, and it was really cool to see the student being involved in this process. After that, they have to do a reflection form during the check-in. So the MTSS coordinator asks these questions, whether it's in person or digitally, and this is what some of the students said. So the MTSS coordinator said, checked in with student who was excited to hit his goal again, he will be checking in with this teacher to get some extra gym time. Checked in with student, he has seen his progress trend in the right direction over the last couple of weeks, explained that he, that he's becoming more aware of what kinds of things trigger him to make the wrong choice. He has mentioned that he needs to sit away from students who may cause him to act out. And specifically from the Google form, the question was, if no, what And specifically from the Google form, the question was, if no, what can you do to improve upon your score from last week? The student said, get help for some of my classes. So it's nice to see them reflecting and really figuring out what they need to be successful. So hopefully in the next five weeks, we'll see Eileen improve her behavior in class and then she'll come off of the MTSS process. And now, our 2023-2024 focus.
Good evening. So my name is Brenn Alies. In addition to all these great successes that were just shared, we want to keep the momentum going by setting goals for the upcoming school year. So I'm looking forward to taking on the role of MTSS coordinator in this upcoming school year. So as was already mentioned, I hope to use my skillset as the secondary literacy coach as well for both middle school and high school to help teachers and students engage in useful strategies in the classroom at all MTSS tier levels so our students can be successful both academically and behaviorally. Our initiative for this upcoming school year is to implement literacy across all content areas of instruction with a focus on the Tier One level. And by the Tier One level, basically, all students will receive opportunities to engage with literacy in all disciplines and become stronger readers, writers, critical thinkers, and meet or exceed grade level standards. One of our main focuses will be academic vocabulary. And these are basically words that students most often see in academic texts and state assessments. Vocabulary is one of the five fundamental elements of learning to read, and we want our students to not just be reading, but reading meaningfully. So there's a direct link between vocabulary and conceptual understanding in science, mathematics, and social studies. So teaching academic vocabulary is critical to reading comprehension. And research has shown that if all teachers focus on the same vocabulary and teach it in the same way, schools will have a powerful comprehensive approach that will have a significant effect on our students' achievement. So as well as the vocabulary, another Tier One MTSS goal is to increase the literacy strategies in all subject areas, not just the vocabulary. Interdisciplinary literacy practices empower students to become independent, like lone learners who think deeply and critically about text. Not only do we want to continue offering students the opportunity to read in all content areas, but our goal is to provide them with opportunities to work on things like historians, scientists, mathematicians, geographers, or literary critics through inquiry-based lessons that allow them to explore text in different ways. And as Ms. Cook had mentioned earlier, we're also hoping to implement the high school to middle school mentoring program. So this is a cross-age peer program that supports the SEL, the social emotional learning component of MTSS, and it connects high achievement high school students with struggling middle school students as a means to not only leverage guided learning times, but also provide that social emotional support, some academic growth and learning opportunities for both the mentees and the mentors. We've also been lucky enough to build my Crexella in the fall, which is a platform of nonfiction texts that can be used in English classes, social studies classes, science classes, with a lot of higher level thinking, the rigor that students need to be, to have that stamina to read, so we're happy to implement that. We also have the Wilson, which can be used as a Tier Two program to help with students that are struggling or reading below grade level. So it's a really great commodity program that we're implementing.
Sure. Yeah, I will tell you that Ms. Alies' work with our teachers in implementing literacy in content areas, it has supported our Tier One and Tier Two instruction. And as I mentioned earlier, we are looking to build a culture of character at the secondary level. We have this Safe School Ambassadors, which will help with our peer mediation as well. We just have training for. So we are again trying to expand all of our elements. The final piece of this, I don't, this is packed full, the whole district honestly is Power School and Data Insights is going to be a repository for where we can store our MTSS data that we will travel with students. We're excited about all the capabilities that Power School brings as a data dashboard to our district. So that's, again, all this kind of ties everything together. Ultimately, this is our secondary team with, you know, everyone can be here tonight, but these are the people contributed to the work that we've done. It's been a great experience for us. We're looking to continue this moving forward. And again, we appreciate the work. Dr. Walkers, did you want to say anything in closing?
So there will be a quiz on this here tonight. It's a lot of information. Clearly, two years of hard work went into designing this. There's a lot more of what we, when we met at our last meeting. It was interesting to see that there was still more work to do, as much as we have done to identify what's next. So we'll probably be presenting a little bit more and we hope that you watch us evolve, our MTSS program. It does touch every hand in every building. So thank you and thank you to our awesome teams. They really are superstars. The school, the district would be what it is without you guys. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, if you want to.
Oh, I didn't see it, okay. I'm sorry, I'm still here. I'm sorry. So at this time, I did want to recognize, so earlier today, we had a sports banquet, that's why I kind of trickled in, and we had a lot of athletes there. It was a great event. I didn't get to actually see the finish of that. I wanted to be here, but also I'm joined by Ms. Molly Kinnick, who was there and celebrated. It was one of our senior athletes. So I did want to recognize Molly on two accounts tonight. First, she has been the student senior representative for the board, right? She has done this for us throughout the year. And on the other capacity, so the night we did the top 20, right, Molly was playing softball and got sidetracked in traffic and all, and didn't get here. So I did want to recognize Molly as number three in the class. She's headed off to University of Hartford to study sports administration and math, which is a tremendous combination. And you know, like I had mentioned, Moneyball that night, right? So that's, this is the Brad Pitt of whatever sport that's going to be. It's Molly Kinnick.
Okay, hold this working. I just wanted to thank Dr. Bell and the rest of the board members for the opportunity to be your guys' student rep for the past two years. Not only have I learned many things from you guys, but I've also improved my public speaking skills. So I'm hoping that that's going to help me along in college and make me more successful. So I just want to thank you guys again. Sorry for coming late, but just want to thank you so much.
Thank you, Molly.
And Molly, Mr. Lozaro has a gift for you.
Thank you.
And you can also take your name.
I was going to say, can I take this? Bye, bye, guys.
Okay, next are our administrative reports. Our first one, Dr. John Beltsch, who presented to school.
Okay, Mr. Lozaro will not be part of my report.
Sorry.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say again, I know we said it on the May 17 meeting, but thank you again to all the voters who supported our many propositions on May 16. We saw about almost a 50% increase in the amount of voters from this year compared to last year, and there was about seven to one yes to no ratio in all of them. So that was tremendous. Thank you for that. As Jocelyn had talked about earlier, it's a busy, busy time, but it's a really good time. Two kindergarten moving up ceremonies, two fifth grade day of ceremonies, two sixth grade moving up ceremonies, eighth grade moving up ceremony, National Junior Honors Society, National Technical Honors Society. We had the Val Victoria and Salutatorian luncheon today. We had the Scholar Athlete Breakfast a few days ago, APE Leadership Day. We had academic awards last Wednesday night at the high school. We had the Scholarship Night coming up on Thursday. It's incredible how much is going on right now, but it's really so much fun because it's the time to celebrate all the kids and all their hard work, not only this year, but some of the stuff is for four years in high school or seven years in elementary school and things of that nature. So it's really great. Just a reminder with the schedule going forward, high school kids starting tomorrow will come if they have a region's exam. On Thursday, we start our middle school half-days. So middle school is starting on Thursday, they're 11:00 a.m. dismissal every day until the last day of school where they dismiss an hour earlier at 10:00. Elementary had one early dismissal earlier in the month, and then they will have four more next week. There'll be half-days fall next week. They're all at noon except for the last day of school. Last day of school everybody's an hour early, middle school at 10:00, elementary at 11:00. All the other half-days for elementary are at noon. Just a reminder that the biggest day of the year is graduation, and that's coming up next Friday, the 23rd. Everybody's invited to Chase Field. There's no tickets or anything necessary, all are welcome. I also wanted to just briefly comment about phases two and three in construction. I just all know phase one is the middle school project. If you drive by periodically, you'll see the evolution as the new ring starts to come to completion. You see the windows are in Area B, the windows for Area C will be coming down in five minutes. We were looking to do some field work here at the high school this summer as part of Phase Two. We were going to do the baseball, softball fields, the soccer field that's in between them, and the tennis courts. But that work has been postponed until next year. We were a little late getting the bids out and basically everybody was so busy, all the contractors, that no one bid on the work this summer because there's just so much between state money and federal money there, just work everywhere. So Phase Two, we were going to do two A and two B, which was going to be over two summers. So now it'll all happen next summer. So the baseball fields, the softball fields, the high schools, the tennis courts, a new outdoor basketball court, all will happen out in this area. And then the ASK playground equipment will be removed next summer. A lot of fill will be coming from Chase Field out to ASK, and there'll be a new modified softball field, modified baseball field, and a modified soccer field out where all the playground equipment and the fields in front of ASK. So you'll have all brand-new high school fields and all brand-new modified fields all done next summer. That's a big part of Phase Two. Other work in Phase Two includes changes to ASK to make in the middle school, including an art classroom where they kill, a fax classroom and kitchen spaces, a huge tech ed lab, and some science labs, the creation of a guidance suite, and the creation of a music suite where the ASK cafeteria is. So you've got band courts, practice room. So there's a ton of stuff in Phase Two next summer. While we're still finishing Phase One at the middle school, and Phase Three will happen next summer, too, which is the turf, the scoreboard, the lights at Glenette Field, the new parking lot in front of the school on East Main Street that we just got from the city. Chase Field will get new track, new turf, new lights, new scoreboard as well. There'll be about half a million dollars worth of renovations through the auditorium and the relocation of the library from upstairs to a much bigger area downstairs. So next summer is going to be some summer. If you have little kids who love construction vehicles, bring them down here. And if you're just entertaining them, you'll sit in the car and watch all the construction videos. Because next summer is going to be construction everywhere. Phases One, Two, and Three are all scheduled to end next month. So they're actually going to, each phase is catching up to the phase in progress. So it's going to be a Tuesday of a summer next summer. Also, we transport, our new bus company will take over on July 1, and Molly Bus will leave town. And school tool, our student information system will guide, slow down after summer school as we ramp up and go to a better program called Power School. Also, on tonight's agenda, you'll see the resignation of Mr. Segar, Director of Technology. He has to go to another district in Westchester County. So we're interviewing right now, we'll have a new Director of Technology on the agenda for July 6th, and we'll have a new Director of Facilities. We should have a name for it to replace Don the second meeting later in July. So those two directors will be open, but we'll get them filled at next month's meetings. And I believe that is everything.
Thank you, Dr. Bell. Next, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Dr. Natasha Walkers.
I just want to say congratulations to our retirees. We have a summer professional learning series for administrators, teachers, and CSCE staff. Flyers will be, or have been sent out to the buildings for you to peruse. And registration opens this Friday on my learning plan, so look through the flyers at the front office. Our District Comprehensive Improvement Plan Team, which is otherwise known as D-CIP, has and will continue to meet in June to complete our improvement plan and goals. Our middle school is also working on a school comprehensive education plan, also known as SEP. Both plans will be available at our July Board of Education meeting. And our summer school K-12 program begins July 6th, and our ESY program begins July 5th. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next, Superintendent for Business, Mr. John Dent.
Dr. Walkers likes to impress me with all these acronyms. Some of them I had no clue, she just asked me for money. MTSS, IXL, Tier, Wilson, PBIS, SELA. And you know what? I just learned all this time. That was an amazing presentation. Like to see all that work you've been doing, what are you doing? To see it all come through, it was amazing. It all kind of tied everything together for me, so great work. So I'm actually here to present a Foundation Aid Plan. So Foundation Aid is the main source of state funding for public schools. And if you can see here, our Foundation Aid from last year to this year went up 7.7 million dollars, or 19.8%. So in the bottom of this, I will read it, New York State requires school districts receiving Foundation Aid increase of more than 10% to create a plan on how these funds will be used to address student performance in the. So I have to actually go through and put this plan and publicly present this to you, which I've done the whole time through my budget presentations, but I'm going to do it more formally and give you the opportunity, the community the opportunity to have some input. So what we must do is seek public comment from parents, teachers, and stakeholders. I presented and we've given opportunities for the community to voice their opinions about the way that we're spending money. I need to take public comments into account and develop this plan, describe in the plan how the Foundation Aid will be used, and I need to post this on the district website. I'm going to post this presentation by 10:00 in the morning, but here's how the 7.7 million dollars will be allocated. I went through most of this through the presentation, but 3 million increase in programs and salaries, 300,000 materials supplies, 650,000 armor one, which is for the protectors for the glass, muscle lining and scoreboard at Chase Field is a total of 500,000. Of course, these are round numbers, I'm just estimating and these allocations. Wireless locks throughout all schools, 650,000. Desktops throughout the schools, 300,000. Athletic equipment, we're going 250,000. We have a bank, we're going to go out and borrow a lot of money for the project, so we have a 1.2 million dollar bank, which is basically an interest payment. We're going to put up 350,000 for our BOSI's, first BOSI's payment for their project, an increased college in a classroom, 100,000, tax books, 150,000, and iPads for students with disabilities, 35,000. So basically, you will have the opportunity for the community, board, parents, students, et cetera, to give public comment, to have input on the way that this allocation is right now. So if you would like, you can email me, this presentation will be up as tomorrow morning, but you have until July 1st to kind of give me some feedback. Did you want to add anything, Dr. Walkers? Okay, well said. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Walkers. Next are consent agenda items. Item A, minutes, the Board of Education meeting from May 17. Item B is the minutes, CPSE meetings, 23, 24 annual reviews for dates from March 28th through May 17. Item C is the minutes, the CPSE meeting minutes, 2023 for dates May 9th through May 24th. Item D, CSE meeting minutes for 2023 for dates May 8th through May 25th. Item E, CSE minutes, 23, 24 annual reviews for dates April 13th through June 5th, 23. Item F is discard request for Ford Jones High School English textbooks. And item G is discard request for Food Service Department food wonders. May have a motion on those two. By Judy. Set by Kara. Seconded by Kara. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, our personnel appointment items. And we have a long list. Okay. Item A is a resignation instructional staff position one-three-seven, English teacher. Item B, resignation instructional staff position one-seven-two, art teacher. Item C, resignation instructional staff position two-five-four, elementary teacher. Item D, resignation instructional staff position three-oh-four, science teacher. Item E, resignation support staff position four-one-three, monitor. Item F, resignation support staff position five-oh-two, cleaner. Item G, resignation administrative staff position five-four-six, Director of Technology. Item H, resignation support staff position three-eight-eight-six, lead maintenance specialist. Item I, employment contracts, confidential secretary, assistant director of the buildings and grounds, human resource coordinator, interim director of facilities three. Item J, employment contract amendments for Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Assistant Superintendent for Business, School Lunch Director, and District Treasurer. Item K, stipend positions for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Item L, appointment instructional staff vacancy two-five-one-seven, position two-oh-four, probationary art teacher. Item N, appointment instructional staff vacancy two-five-one-eight, position two-five-four, probationary elementary education teacher. Item N, appointment instructional staff vacancy two-five-one-eight, position two-six-five, probationary elementary education teacher. Item O, appointment instructional staff vacancy two-five-three-oh, twenty-twenty-three summer school teachers, nurses, substitutes. Item B, appointment support staff vacancy two-five-three-one, twenty-twenty-three summer school support staff positions. Item Q, appointment support staff vacancy two-five-three-seven, positions five-oh-two, five-oh-three, five-oh-four, probationary cleaners. Item R, appointment support staff vacancy two-five-three-eight, position four-four-five, provisionary ground worker. Item S, appointment support staff vacancy two-five-four-zero, temporary summer laborers. Item T, appointment administrative vacancy two-five-four-three, twenty-twenty-three summer school principals. Item U, appointment support staff vacancy two-five-four-five, position three-eight-nine, probationary administrative aide. Item V, appointment substitute teachers and nurses for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Item W, change in status support staff provisional determinant status, position three-five-one-zero, senior computer network specialists. Uh, item X, amendment to Board Docs, personnel agenda items from May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. May I have a motion on those items?
I have a question.
Yes, Judy.
What is the item K stipend positions for the two-thousand, twenty-three, twenty-four school year? Is that?
District clerk, and tax collector, and internal things auditor.
Right.
District office.
District office.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything?
I'll move it.
Moved by Bill Harris. Second? Seconded by Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
No, we almost ran out of letters there.
Yeah, that was close.
Uh, the two very important ones are item M and item N, which are Anna Milani and Christine Buddha, who are two new elementary teachers at ASK. They're both here tonight, so we'll stand. Congratulations to both of you. Sorry I didn't sit through them, but now you know a lot more about PJ and DSS. Congratulations to both of you.
Okay. Next are our action items. Item A, resolution regarding the State Education Department regulation regarding indigenous team names, mascots, and logos. Uh, Dr. Bell, would you like to elaborate on that, please?
Sure. About twenty years ago, Commissioner Mills was the commissioner for the state at the time. They asked all schools to stop using nicknames, mascots, and logos related to indigenous people. And the Board and Fort Jerus, at that time, changed our team nickname from the Red Raiders to the Raiders. Some of us still haven't gotten over that. Uh, I don't know who, but Jason and I, for starters. Uh, and so they changed the nickname from the Red Raiders to the Raiders, and at that time, we stopped using things like Indian head on our varsity jackets, and on our football helmets, and things of that nature. Speed forward twenty-some years, and now it's no longer a recommendation, it is now a requirement. Uh, so, what they've said is any district that has the name Indians, Braves, Warriors, Raiders, and a bunch of other ones, uh, if at any time in the history of your school that that nickname has ever been associated with indigenous people, it will no longer be allowed. So, if you were the Raiders forever, and you had a symbol that looked like a pirate, like the Oakland Raiders did, you know, with the eye patch and the swords, you could keep the Raider name. If, but if at any time your Raider name was associated with an Indian, you can't keep it. So, every, uh, school district Board of Education in New York State that has one of these, uh, nicknames, mascots, and logos, has to adopt a resolution by June thirtieth of this year that says you will have a new nickname by July first of twenty-twenty-five. So, we have two more school years to either A, have this overturned in the courts, B, have great political pressure on all needing to change it from a requirement to a recommendation, or C, our other option is to get permission from a tribe, uh, to allow us to use that, to continue to use the Raider name. So, what has happened tonight is the Board has to approve a resolution that says we put the process in place over the next two years to develop, uh, a new nickname, uh, for our teams, uh, but doesn't have to be in place until the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, if none of those other contingencies take effect. So, our plan is if, if, if nothing happens to, uh, allow us to keep the Raider nickname, then we'll begin a process where we'll use the website and social media to solicit ideas of potential names. And then, we thought we would take a huge list of all the ideas and bring it to a more manageable number of, of choices, and then take it to the student body and let the kids decide what they wanna become. Uh, so, and that would be, that worst, that's the worst-case scenario, is what we actually have to do. So, we'll put the wheels in motion. Although, some of us are still secretly praying that political pressure, court case, or an Indian reservation that'll save us. And any of those three things could come out, but we have to be ready with Plan B in case none of those things save us. Anybody wanna comment or ask questions?
So, just to clarify for everyone, also, it's my understanding that word Raiders, had we adopted another mascot not, not associated, we'd then keep the name?
Yeah. If we never, ever
Right.
Had it associated with a Raider, with an Indian. So, we couldn't
If a new mascot's adopted, that still is the hard one.
Right, right. 'Cause I, I was hoping our answer was gonna be, we could keep the Raider word and change to something like the Las Vegas Raiders logo, which was a pirate. And they said, no, you cannot keep the Raider name, or the Warrior name, or any of those, if at any time it was ever associated. If your school ever did a no-no, had associated it with an Indian, you're out. And then I told all the other
Somebody else could use it.
I told all the other superintendents, be ready, because the Monroeberry Crusaders, the Valley Central Vikings, uh, I said, uh, who else? I said, you'll be next. It'll be the white guys next. Well, the white, powerful white guys from, who were the Crusaders and the Vikings and everything like that. So, it's just a matter of time. We'll all be the Pansies and the Dandelions.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bell. Uh, may I have a motion on that, please? All right, thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next are change orders and allowances. May I have a motion on that, please?
Move.
Moved by Bill Harris. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Jason. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item C is the E-Pex Energy Purchasing Resolution for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, may I have a motion for that, just for Mike? You have a second?
A second.
Second. Any questions on that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D is the Health and Wellness Contract with the Middletown City School District. May I have a question on that?
I'll make the motion.
Any? Second, please?
I'll second.
Kara, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D is a grant acceptance of seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar Earth Day Grant for Fort Jerus High School. May I have a motion on that? Michael? Second, please. Judy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F is a side letter of agreement for Fort Jerus Teachers Association regarding new extracurricular activities. May I have a motion on that?
I'll motion.
Any? Second, Jake? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G is a side letter of agreement, CSCE Local eight-thirty-six regarding compensation for a hundred and eighty-two days for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. May I have a motion on that?
I'll motion that.
Any? Oh, sorry. Second, Mike. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item A, to support your city school district substitute compensation provision. May I have a motion on that, please?
Move it.
Moved by Bill Harris. Second? Michael? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next are Board Committee reports, uh, buildings and grounds. We have not scheduled a meeting yet, but it'll be so soon. Uh, Fort Jerus, any question?
Tomorrow on Flag Day, uh, the ceremony will start at five-thirty outside City Hall. Music ceremony at six. Also, the, um, the Fort Jerus Park Food Truck Feast is Monday, July the third, at five PM to ten PM, Riverside Park, which is eighty-one King Street. Fireworks at dusk from Point Peter. The one-hundred-and-seventy-second Fireman's Parade is Saturday, July eighth, and it starts at two.
Okay, any? Thank you very much. Uh, next is policy. Andy, do you have anything?
Yes, um, the Health and Wellness Committee will meet again in the fall.
Okay.
We didn't meet on May, and that report was given at the last Board meeting.
Okay, so that's Health and Wellness. Awesome. Okay, thank you. Uh, next, Isma. Flo is in Italy. Having his gelato right now. Uh, BLT, Bill Harris?
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay, thank you. Uh, education. Uh, Kara?
I appreciate it, but Dr. Walkley, I want to make sure.
Okay. Would you, please?
Um, just briefly, we met on, um, textbooks, adoption. We reviewed our Wilson Training, uh, Project Lead the Way, um, training schedule, so, and our Teachers College, uh, training schedule as well. So, that's part of our, uh, professional learning. We brought that over to our Professional Learning Committee, um, to make those schedules for the summer. So, we'll have Project Lead the Way, some of the trainings happening now and into the summer and into the fall. Um, Teachers College will happen right before school starts, and then with a carryover into this, into the school year. And, um, Wilson Training will have, will be our main focus for next year.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, next is safety. Okay, very good. Uh, Deer Park, Flo's way. And Orange County School Board, Phil?
Yeah, Orange County School Board had our final meeting of the season on June seventh, where we had our elections of officers. And we ended the season with something we'd never done before. We had three student speakers come from three different districts, and they came from Warwick, Middletown, and Marlborough. And they talked about the civic readiness and student voice programs. And they spoke to us about the students' point of view, and they wanted us to see things from students' perspective. So, we took that, and we're gonna run with that for the next season, see how far we can go. And it was a good idea to have a student come and speak to us, so we can see where we wanna set our sights for our goals for the next school year. And, uh, the Orange County School Board Association also recognized Debbie Lash, and they recognized Flo Santini for their years and years of work put into volunteering on our school board. And I do have certificates for both of them that I will get to them as soon as I can.
Thank you very much, Phil. All right. Uh, let's see. Next are Board Member Comments. Uh, Jason? Okay, thank you. Judy?
I just wanna congratulate all our retirees, and I hope they enjoy their retirement.
Michael?
Same. I really consider you retiring, and, uh, the DSS presentation was incredible. I'd like to see the continued flow of success on the program.
For her. Thanks, all. Thanks, Michael. Andy?
Yeah, um, I would also like to congratulate the retirees. And I always say, the vacancy you will leave behind may be filled by others, and the positions that you will hold right now, but in our hearts, you are simply irreplaceable. We are going to miss you. We are saying our goodbyes, but the wonderful things you have taught, uh, you have taught us will live in our hearts forever. And I wanna do say about Christine Buddha, I can remember going to church at St. Mary's, and her mom there, and we would talk, and that, and she used to say, "I don't know, Regis, you got her through school. I don't know how you did it, but congratulations." And I know she's looking down on us, and your dad.
Thank you, Andy. Mike?
I just wanna say congratulations also to retirees. Uh, wish you all the best, and welcome aboard to our new hires. So, wish you the same success as our retirees, or have had in our experience.
Thank you, Mike. Phil?
Uh, like Dr. Bell said earlier, this is just busy, busy, busy with six second formation points after it. But I have had the pleasure of attending so many great things over the last week. Uh, the National Junior Honor Society inductions, uh, moving up this morning at HVE, and, uh, the HVE there program I was at, and leadership there at HVE, and the opportunity to speak to seven classes, uh, all of our special needs kids. I met with all seven classes, and I did a craft with them. I did a food craft with them. We made smores mix. And, uh, I spoke to over a hundred students, and we had a great time. I was there all day, and I just loved every second of it. This Thursday, I'm looking forward to one of my favorite times of the year, and that's attending the scholarship presentations. Uh, just the outpouring from this community to give us over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to give to our students is just so commendable. It's something to take our hands off to everyone in this community. And also, this Friday night at seven o'clock is our last drama club performance. It'll be from the high school. And seniors, Ava Zatello, Emily Spalsonelli, Coral Garcia- And seniors, Adrian Zatello, Emily Spalcinelli, Coral Garcia, and Toria Burton will be directing a series of one-acting plays. And I've had the pleasure of going. All four of these students, they were my students in middle school when I was directing, starting in seventh grade. So if you could come out, it's a free will offering. They're just taking a donation to go towards their drama club. There's no charge. So if you have the opportunity Friday night, come out at 7 o'clock and just cheer on our seniors. I'll give a last announcement.
Thank you, Bill. Kara?
I also just want to extend my congratulations to all the retirees.
All right. Very good. Yeah, it's been a, it's been a whirlwind the last week or so. You know, I've attended a lot of the events too, and it's just, it's just wonderful to see these kids and their accomplishments and everything they've done. And I got to tell you, the little ones are just cute as a button. And the lessons they come out with are just make or shuffle. So it's been great. Next are dates to remember. Wednesday, June 14, ASK kindergarten moving up ceremony at 9:00 AM. And. Yeah, right. HVE pre-kindergarten moving up at 10:00. Thank you, John. Wednesday through Friday, June 14 through the 23rd, our Regent's exams. Thursday, June 15, is the ASK sixth grade moving up ceremony at 9:00 AM. And scholarship night at 6:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Friday, June 16, is the Arden Hill CTEC graduation, a time to be announced at the Arden Hill campus. Friday, also, June 16, is the HVE sixth grade moving up ceremony at 10:00, I believe, because I'm here, but I believe that's correct. And the Fort Jervis High School Drama Club Fall Show, Friday night, 7:00 PM. Monday, June 19, it's Juneteenth, schools are closed. Wednesday and Thursday, June 20th and 21st, is the Gibson Road CTEC graduation, a time to be announced, and that will be at the Amy Bull Chris Campus on Gibson Road. Tuesday through Thursday, June 20, 20th through 22nd, early dismissal, secondary dismissing at 11:00 AM. Elementary dismissing at 12:00 PM, district wide. Wednesday, June 21st, eighth grade stepping up ceremony, a time to be announced, then the location to be announced later. Friday, June 23rd, last day of school, early dismissal, secondary dismissing at 10:00 AM. Elementary dismissing at 11:00 AM. Report cards will be distributed, elementary trimester three. Class of 23 graduation ceremonies will be at 6:00 at Chase Field. Let's see. Special note here, the district-wide safety plan is available for review by the public. Appointments can be made to review the plan with Buildings and Grounds Office by calling 845-858-3100, extension 17501, or by mailing And with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to move into executive session for contract discussion. There will be no action taken when we come back. Have a great evening, everybody.
I'm just going to.
So moved by Bill?
Bill Harris.
Okay. And seconded by Kara?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.